Commission of the Expert Vice-Pensioners will just be telling all our students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning tools as a necessary process.
Thank you. Very important for all of you. I would just say we would like to address the committee as something that's not, and I think you may do so now.
Um, okay. Just want to congratulate everyone that are happy and very happy to be here. Just the person. Anyway. My neighbor Rocco Santilli is the new class of the graduates from kindergarten. How exciting, so thank you all for making that happen. He's been a little teacher at this class of 2027. Okay, so how old do we feel? Here he is graduating from kindergarten, so I just want to thank you because he loved it. He truly loved kindergarten all day. He made a lot of friends and he did have a lot of fun. And pretty much the feedback I got, as little as I got probably, you know, it was a great success. And I think there's a lot of towns, neighboring towns are very jealous of us. And I said, hey, you got the right superintendent. They got me.
Nancy, uh, can I agenda?
We have our regular meeting minutes on June 10th and also the executive session minutes on the same day. Uh, there is an appointment for an HR secretary, secretary substitute coordinator for the United States. She was promoted to the law office in the last day. Uh, there is the resignation of the Metcalf principal that Blair has done, uh, forwarded to you since the back of the cabinet desk there. We also have another list of recalls. It's done final scheduling decisions at high school. The recommendation for a three-year contract for our director of instructional information technologies. The recommended administrative salary adjustments, monthly bills, a couple of return payments for next year for the new school. It's pretty big.
Okay, so we're going to hold questions out. Okay. More questions or comments?
Sorry.
All in favor? I. No questions? Who cares? Thank you. Okay, we have correspondence. See if you have those tools. Everybody else like that? Sixteen button.
Uh, this is the document that I've forwarded to electronically, as I said, I would very quickly jump out. And basically what I've been signing in open session about following all the changes as they occur and building them into a deeper of the budget. So this is the revised recording prior to the start of fiscal year. And the changes are all of the staffing adjustments, meaning retirement, attrition, reductions and so forth are all in budget. We know that the pension law, the pension settlement has been accepted. All of those were advised pensions rates are in the budget. The admin salary changes are in the budget. The, a lot of contracts were awarded within the last couple of months and a lot of them had some implications both up and down, but they're all in. Uh, we did go through the supplies, materials and resources one more time and had some final decisions. We made all the adjustments that we knew of. There was an adjustment in CTE tuitions, brand technical education tuitions baseline numbers as, as we know that now, there was a reduction in that actually. And in addition, we've been talking about the three remaining leases. We have half of them in the operating budget and maintain half of them out of the operating budget. Two of those leases, other than three, have now been placed in the operating budget. So the only one that is outstanding is one lease approximately $57,000. Instead of being 130s next year, you're driving the operating, we're down to 57. So that's where we are at this point. Again, bottom line is the same, but the auditor will prefer that the investors may follow this process. If you actually go on, the new budget will be adjusted in line, because this will be my starting point.
Is there any questions? Your motion to the modified budget has been settled by the superintendent. Unless there's a other multiple?
The order multiple. So this is the order. This is your revised salary.
Let's hear your contact first.
I mean, if all of the credits stand, which is quite important.
Yeah, 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 I got that. Okay. Well, that's a number you know, they might, okay, so let's have a motion to move that up then. Let's take it.
Just a little. Well, I want to discuss that for act pair to go to the budget. We're not changing the budget. And as far as I'm concerned, whatever can demand that we make another motion to approve the budget. I mean, I like the fact that it's adjusted, that's fine, this is our starting point, but we haven't done anything different. Well, we've done some things around and we are allowed to do that.
Yeah, we're going to change the bottom line.
That's right. So what do we need, motion and approval?
Well, is there a reason? I don't have a number. It's not a case. Yeah.
So, so really, is there more of the allocation that they want to build up? Which, which you, you know, are able to do task there is. So this is kind of a, uh, of course, I'll just say. Incur the, with the allocation.
Allocation.
Yeah, absolutely, that's all right. But I agree, I think it's just good to use.
Yeah, we're not the other.
Oh, we're the other.
We're on the bottom line again. Okay. I mean, we're all under the book, so I guess we're in corollary.
Just the current stuff.
Have they updated the line items?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to currently update, we update some of the allocations.
Yeah, the other piece of this, just the, once the bottom line is approved, be allowing administration flexibility and things around as they see fit. So there's no real need for offside involvement unless it's going to go up and down significantly or the administration wants to bring it to our attention.
Part of the concern is that there are some lines that are pretty dramatic because of the 10-step teacher, place five second step teacher. Uh, moving the teacher places together, that's happening. Uh, personally, seeing maybe adjustments like that will sometime back on a door, maybe a concern.
But I think if we do a naked census, uh, but a monitoring application change that is somewhat more. Back down.
Hello, okay. Obviously, that's not suspicious. Okay. Do this, do this, we don't need this to teach a player. That's a mystery, yeah, a mystery.
Did you actually clear for the teacher?
Oh, okay. Okay. You know, actually, I'm agenda. Sorry, I assume no one's here for some other reason.
I'm, I'm just here.
I think he's here like. All right, I just didn't want you to have to wait if you didn't need to.
I've got my school work. No, we get nothing else.
I can find someone to wait.
Please work on your seat and prize our hand.
Um, this was not part of the fact that because the, um, the draft hasn't existed prior to the last round of review. They said, uh, tell everybody, school committee, town council, ETA, teacher staff. And, um, there's not a lot of adjustments. This has been a gear-bon process and this was the fourth round of review that we went through. So what I figured I would do is just highlight the changes. Looks like besides our photographer, the rest of the people, the audience required strategic planning process. So I need to go into detail about everything that's in here. So basically on, um, I'm just going to do this in order to highlight the adjustments based on the last round of feedback. The responsive student family support intervention is the first and focus area. And priority number three, there was a report, a request to add, this is in 3P, add some exploration of additional K-12 after-school enrichment opportunities for students. Their, their interest was, was piqued with the farm language discussion, but there's more than farm language that. We have to explore their additional opportunities, so that is what the addition was there to do. Then on the next page, priority four, uh, just a statement about, this is actually, Noah was surprised about some of the local support staff that we have here in the school stadium. They existed, so we wanted to add some, something about communicating all of their resources to, to families, to students and so forth. This, you know, in order to take advantage of that, first of all, that they're here and very good. That's it on the focus area. Uh, second focus area is culture, climate and morale. Priority number one, there's a minor change under action one A. Some conversation about the type of technology-supported strategies and we had one piece of feedback that suggested one thing and another piece of feedback from a different person that was literally opposite. So we did, uh, we just added a statement based on audience preference. I think there's a lot of ways to communicate technologically, but we want to try to do it in a way that will reach the majority of individuals. So we just make that statement on the second page. Increasing staff and student recognition. 2B was changed to monthly. That's the staff and student highlighting in the school-based super tech, including technology-supported communication strategy, not to a monthly recognition. It was, we just, it was too much. Uh, and then, um, 2F was added, create, publish and implement a balanced document, qualifications for K-12 student recognition programs. Honorable effort towards presidential, etc. We've made a lot of changes to several of those things and some of them have happened, they're happening, they're not happening in the next year. So what is the district recognition program for students? Let's get it all out and replace culture. So that was a piece of feedback, I think that was the most important. Uh, the next focus area was curriculum standards and assessment. The only change happens on page two, under the comprehensive assessment system, under 2B. We used to say put out training where necessary, but we wanted to be specific about an assessment literacy training, uh, for not just the teachers, but, but students and families as well. Because that is an important piece of really understanding how assessments are used and why they're used and, um, how we use the results to make the programmatic and instructional decisions for our kids. Uh, the next focus area was developing, strengthening instructional practices. And the only thing that we did was add a data source under priority three, uh, which is the professional instruction that was incorporated by Roger Chanzan, who was the owner of our institute. So it's just the addition of a new data source. Uh, technology, there were no recommendations for adjustments in this last round of revision. Under school safety, security and wellness, the only recommendation came on the first page. Priority number one was to address structural and environmental vulnerabilities to maximize safety. What we added is information setting, that's the, um, security of our, of our confidential data, personal information and that kind of thing. Uh, so we, we added one after MG, which is a professional oil of internal systems and then implementing those recommendations as necessary to address the environmental risks. That was it, under school safety. And then under fiscal prudence and responsibility, no additional recommendations for changes for our provider. So, um, lots of good stuff, the amount of feedback as we progressed got smaller and smaller, but the document itself just kept getting better and better. So we have a few members of the team working to the audience and then of course, Mark and Lee, Sir, a lot of the community, Bob and Lee themselves. So we had, and you can see on the second page of the, of the document that I gave you, that there were a lot of people that were involved. You know, everybody had a different perspective and I think at the end of the day, we're all really happy with what we've come out of for our future.
Any more questions?
I'd just like to say excellent job, thank you very much, thank you to our participants. It's a wonderful working document, full of great, great, great stuff. I was, when I read it, I was thrilled. Excellent document, thank you so much for your hard work. Thank you for our support and we'll play about this. Nice, excellent.
We have a motion for, uh, 2015, 2020, this great strategic player. So, uh, second. All in favor?
I.
One official.
May I have one too?
Yes.
Who's got the radio?
The question is all known. Thank you.
Coaching is a jam. Worth the money. Okay, we have the superintendent's contact. Is there a good chance to look at it? Please look at it. So, I don't know, any questions? Good. Yeah, motion to approve the superintendent's contract.
Sorry.
All in favor? Uh, I. Congratulations.
You won them.
Thank you.
Twenty years.
Twenty-two.
Four, two years for this project?
Yeah.
Just getting started.
It doesn't need your hand. In case you're wondering. Okay, everyone finished this?
Couldn't do it, yes.
Then my girl have a project.
If I could, uh, move that back into the school, maybe, uh, if we should go for that. I know there will be a question. So in the, uh, what was in the school committee packet, the enclosure, the June 23rd, 2015 update of the school safety construction project and tennis court reconstruction project. It's pretty much the same, except that they've gone some pipe offices, if I'm sorry, correct with those. And then there's a, uh, a statement at the bottom, which I'll get to, since that ties in more with the overall budget projection, capital project and review. So the school safety construction project, uh, there is a meeting directly after this for the, uh, building committee after this meeting tonight. And it is to address, uh, two items that were particularly concerned, uh, and that will require, you know, further discussion, the architect can overlook them. Uh, the second goal where, uh, so the, so the, on the school safety construction is the construction component and then the security component. The scope review on the construction, all fine. On the security, that's where it got a little headless and at the time of this writing, there was a, uh, a difference between, uh, what was in the scope review and what was submitted by Irving, who was the GC of about $20,000. That's what I had for information at the point of writing, which was sometime early last week. Since then, the scope review has been, uh, fully vetted and, um, the architect reported to me that that $20,000 cost is, uh, not enough. But that part of it will be discussed in the coming year. So that's, that's good news. Uh, the contract, I have it in hand, it did go to Andrew, he reviewed it, he said it's pretty much pro forma, well, it may go forward, we should be fine. Lewis should be to other the architecture, bringing that tonight and we really want to get the GC mobile out, so that's what we're working on getting to. The tennis court, uh, if anybody needs to. If you want to see 1,500 yards of dirt, it's like over that level of park, it is a lot. It is like, that we had a glove there, like tap on it, say stop, you can add, so, uh, Josh was trying to offload it. There is a, um, I believe we might have touched on it in a previous speaking, but there was a, um, an issue with the tennis court regarding drainage, the drainage. We did a color conference, Martin Weaver involved and, and there was consensus that to move forward and put in the drainage system that needed to be, uh, installed so that the tennis courts will drain properly, you know, the substrate. And again, that clause came in, it was a little higher, the architect in, uh, Dave D'Amico, who did the, um, the, what do you call that? The engineering, civil engineering for the tennis courts. They worked with Josh to lower that amount, that would be discussed tonight. I think it's a little higher than what we had initially said, but it looks like it nets out to around $14,000. We were looking at more like 10 to 15, uh, but again, help cover, uh, tennis built. So now I want to stop. Now if you go to the, uh, the ability projections here. So basically I'm showing the revenue in the most significant under the revenue. If you're in the revenue source column at the bottom that says total and local contribution, you know, that is still against other group, huh? And then you move across to the right and you see the difference. That was the, uh, that was the distribution from the fund balance that we're able to take from, uh, sources. So if you go down to the expenses, I'm still holding with the projection of finishing with about, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars this year, but that number always tends to contract. Uh, it's still pretty elastic, I guess that's the best way to say it, but, um, so then your role of where you see the projected for current year, having taken that fund base. The audit is from, uh, last June 30th, you receive the projected, uh, 2014, 15, two-year general fund balance. Then what I did for the school committee's, uh, review is I just showed, uh, again, reading left to right, the fund, the fund name and then the action. And then I tried to, I think I got them all, school committee where action is actually taken. So you can see that, you know, uh, this is something that you do every year and you might not be aware of those kind of good exercises show. The first line, aside from general fund budget workshop, 22514. When you approve the budget, if you go back up to the revenue, you see available from surplus, essentially what we're doing is saying, we as a body of saying, we know we're going to use some district funds to maintain that global contribution of 22,000. That's, and that's, that's an assignment that can be a little, a little fluid and, uh, based on other initiatives. The technology leases, that is marked all going to that. The, uh, you assign for the purchase of the maintenance structure. Then we move down to the next fund, the capital project housing aid. And this is really, the housing aid is a, a reorganization from the state, uh, for, by funding that fund, the capital housing project, uh, capital project housing aid fund. So again, the school committee took the, uh, committed for the safety and security and for the tennis courts. Then the capital reserve technology, this was, uh, in the amount of 9,899. That was the, um, that was the carryover to complete the, uh, the wireless and that ended up hitting this year's, uh, budget. And then there was the food service, which goes all the way back to July of 13th, but didn't hit until we changed and we settled up that account when we changed, you see that sort of there are. Yeah, it dumped it, yeah. Okay, 14, okay. The superintendent's pointing out on, on, um, the capital reserve technology, the 1210, that should be 14, not 15.
And a couple lines above that on the safety and security project?
Yes.
That was 3114?
Yes. Yes. So those were the discussions. So some of these were referencing, this was the beginning with a genesis of the discussion in that. So on the, on 3114, that motion, if my research is correct, was to take the available capital reserve fund balance and assign it to safety and technology to begin that process. And we have now, uh, come through with the bid, which is going to get to that statement. So this kind of gives you, you know, the reference of what we've been talking about and I think the document that the superintendent chose to, you know, this is pretty lively stuff. This is not stagnant, it's constantly. And then, uh, again, as the, uh, you know, it's just so that we're transparent, you know, so then we end up with a fund balance, uh, unrestricted after all that. For the, uh, June 30th, 2015, we're looking at a fund balance of approximately 550,000. So all of that, and you look at where we, um, had the general fund balance in 2014 of 1.1 million. Look at the body of work in between and then look at what we're saying, we're going to end this year. And it's pretty impressive how the school committee is managing cash and protecting assets in the district. And then, uh, again, for transparency going forward, so folks can get a better sense of comfort. And then, again, for transparency going forward, so folks can get a better sense of comfort. The current budget there, that's a budget that will begin July first, two thousand fifteen, is a $200,000 assignment from the general fund, and it's just comes under that, available from surplus. And then as the superintendent noted, we're still going to be carrying $57,000 outside of the budget, but when you look at the leases from two forty-four to fifty-seven, that's pretty significant, that we're able to take from outside of the budget in our original and just goes to go over that, et cetera. So that's, that brings us to the statement at the bottom of the, what was in your revised enclosure. So we've been in contact with the, with our new order, and kind of reviewed everything we just reviewed with you. And in order, the mechanics to move the capital housing, to move dollars out of the general fund into the capital project housing aid funds. I'll say that again, to move out of the general fund into the capital project housing aid funds. Even though when you look at the, again, in three fourteen, and again, in two fifty, this is really where we take the action, and we're really going to do it before the fiscal year closes. So the, the action or the whole, this is its very motion to commit to capital project housing aid fund, the amount necessary to pay the remaining balance to complete the capital projects for the tennis court project and school safety project. And that, that demonstrates to the auditor, for the recorders, that you move these funds. You had a discussion, and now we did.
And they're in development.
And then that takes that 1.1 million out of the general fund and moves it to a different fund, so now that's not hitting on, it's hitting an inappropriate fund and not overs. To some of you that don't understand, they pick it up and they would, they could, erroneous me, they, there's a, there's a available 1.1 million dollars, but it's actually not even. So.
They don't have a number on them?
No, she said we don't need a number, part because it gives you, it gives the school committee the, you know, the fluidity to say, you know, what if it came out short? I mean, those are the big numbers, but if they go over, now they're stuck, and that is a whole reaction, so. And I mean, there's going to be full disclosure along the way. I'll make the motion to commit to capital project housing aid fund, the amount necessary to pay the remaining balance to complete capital projects for the tennis court project and school safety project.
Second. I, now I can, regarding the one question, so the reimbursement that we have, what is, when does that pop up? That pops up from the fifteen sixteen, and what?
Yeah, so, okay. We actually discussed this, we said let's, but we don't want to overwhelm you, but it's a great question, and it is the right question. So by doing everything we're doing tonight, and by pushing to get the substantial completion done on these two projects, we could receive payment in late October, and then, of fifteen sixteen, so the school, the school given is still up. And it's roughly about, it's probably a little over fifty percent.
And we get that, does that automatically go back into the capital?
It goes into the capital, however, there's been a lot of derisions when the school committee is done, and I, again, we talked with the auditor about it, if the school committee can take action to take funds.
You're carrying a marker? Okay. Tuesday, July eight. No, it's actually Tuesday, July twenty-first. Okay. I go it here.
So if we could move it to the twenty-second?
Twenty-second. You can't do that, please. How about twenty-third?
Twenty-third?
You go to twenty-third? Now, either way, I'm not going to be able to make a modification. So you're not going to, okay. Margaret, you go to twenty-third? Share a plan? Mr. Ross, you run? I'm on there, are you sure?
Sure. You can drive to, you can drive to.
Robert.
They have thirty probably. They can down, if we need to make a, we'll bring you back tomorrow. See you again.
So no meeting on July fourteenth? No meeting on July, oh, no, July. So it was on the twenty-first. They only meet to July twenty-first, clock is eighteen, so now we're going to July twenty-third. August eighteen, everybody associated with, I'm going to ask down to a one and four, I'm going to talk a little bit somewhere, I don't know if we can get. Natalie, are you available on eighteen?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Val? Yeah, I think so, okay. Daniel, Gerald, Terry, all of them on August eighteen? Terry, are you on August eighteen?
Off the.
Okay. So everybody will be on August. So we don't have Val from July eighteen?
Also, I was planning on thinking that we might have to go off to August as well.
I'm thinking, I think it's too late. Back up to July eighteen?
Very early July.
Val, you're going to July eighteen?
Um, we, what is the decision?
But what time, what date are you going to move to again? Sorry, it's not, everybody's going to July thirteenth. Is there, are you good that week or no?
Oh, July.
No, I'm thirteen, fourteen, February eighteen-sixteen, January seventeen. Okay. So why don't we move the, okay, scratch July, and let's have our meeting on July, I don't really care, what, Tuesday, fourteen, see, I'll come on Tuesday? Okay. Do you ready, Brian? All right.
It would be even better if I went to July.
Right, there you go. Okay, Rob, it's July fourteen. And so, and then we, and then we're keeping August eight, yeah, okay. Is that official, okay?
Fourteen, I'm on the, I'm here now.
So the fourteen is actually the only meeting. We're putting together two and one meetings, we're going, then.
That's fine. Is that a recording? Yeah, that's good. All right.
I don't think, but you will know, but it's not, that's just, my next meeting is, um, according to the staff. So that's my prior.
Priorities. We'll, we'll figure things out.
Somewhere.
Somehow.
We'll all get them, we'll issue post-it notes, we'll just write down what we think. They're big success.
You could always swipe. Sure, have a meeting now. Okay. All right. We're still here for a minute. Uh, my last issue.
Motion to adjourn to executive session under, let's, four, six, five, person.
Second, third, all in favor? Aha.